The House will come to order. Members, please take your seats. Sergeant at Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Reverend Dr. Jerome Barber, Senior Pastor, Sixth Mount Zion Baptist Temple Hampton, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Let us pray. God of all strength and love, we pause to thank you as we celebrate another day. Thank you for trusting these your servant leaders with this awesome privilege to lead in these challenging times. Today, we remember the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., this day of service, and reflect on his great work in love and life of service. As we go about the business of upholding and creating laws, let love be our motivation and the priority of this day. Help us to live in love, lift others with love, and lead by love. A love that helps us to focus on the marginalized, a love that puts a spotlight on the invisible until they become visible, a love that gives a voice to the voiceless. Let each session begin and end in love. Empower us as we serve in love, for you, oh God, are love. May the good we do today be a blessing to this great Commonwealth and bring glory to you as we seal this prayer with a strong amen.
Pursuant to House Rule Four, the Journal shall reflect that the following members have been granted permission to participate in today's session via electronic communication means. Delegate Backby. The remaining members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. Mr. Clerk.
Delegate Bagby.
Present.
The clerk will close the roll.
Mr. Speaker, quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule Three, I have examined and approved the Journal of the House of Delegates for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Motions and resolutions under Rule Thirty-nine pursuant to the provisions of Rule Forty are now in order. Does the clerk have any announcements or communications?
No announcements or communications, Mr. Speaker, but in this first portion of the morning hour pursuant to House Rule Forty, the Speaker requests members use the Request to Speak button for those addenda items displayed for reference on the voting boards.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, ladies and the House, today in the gallery we have the Executive and the State Board of the High School Republican Federation of Virginia, formerly known as the Teenage Republicans. We also have some general membership of the organization here as well. The Executive Board includes State Chairman Luke Sweetnam, Vice Chairman Sam Widener, Secretary Michael Gregory, Treasurer Spencer Lombardo, and Communications Director James Eustace. This organization was founded in two thousand twenty to encourage conservative youth to be in active voices in schools across Commonwealth. And these high school students have also worked to get Republican candidates elected throughout the Commonwealth. Many of their volunteers, many of their members volunteered and interned for the Youngkin campaign as well as other campaigns. After working with the Virginia Democrats Team Caucus, the organization was involved in the two thousand twenty-one passing of House Bill nineteen forty. This gave high schoolers the ability to have a civic engagement day once a year, has an excused absence from school. And that was at the, that bill was Delegate Russell's bill. And they are, they are continued to be involved as they tripled their membership in the last year. As Ronald Reagan said, "Freedom is no more than one generation away from extinction." This cannot be more true, and this organization is fighting to preserve liberty for both himself and the generations that follow them. I hope you'll give the High School Republican Federation a warm House of Delegates welcome.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I'd like to introduce the pastor who gave us our prayer today. And he is none other than the Reverend Dr. Jerome Barber. He's a senior pastor at Sixth Mount Zion Baptist Temple, which is a strong, growing congregation in Hampton. He's also the Executive Director at the Sixth House, which is a faith-based community organization. Reverend Barber has been involved in mobilizing the congregation of Sixth Mount Zion to take the gospel to the world. He has led teams of pastors, medical professionals, educators, and youth to conduct women's conferences, workshops, and medical clinics throughout Kenya, Uganda, South Africa, Haiti, London, and Brazil. But Reverend Barber recognizes that he does not have to leave this country to care for the sick, the homeless, and the least of these. During this pandemic, Reverend Barber extended the walls of the church by offering free COVID and flu vaccines to the community. In addition to this, Reverend Barber is celebrating today his twenty-sixth anniversary as pastor of Sixth Mount Zion and forty-four years in the ministry. And even though it's his celebration, he has asked all of us not to bring him the gifts, but to purchase sleeping bags and let's put them on the altar and get them ready to go to the homeless and the needy instead. He has totally extended the walls of the church into the community when he learned that there was a young lady who had been providing hot nutritious meals to her community for five years, all by herself. He quickly jumped in and he helped in so many ways. First thing he started to do was to provide fresh fruits and vegetables from a farm. Because the young lady who was providing these meals said that her community seldom had any fresh fruits or vegetables. So she wanted to make sure they had squash and cabbage and lima beans, those types of things. So he was providing those. But next thing he did was start working the lines with the people serving them. And then when people started going through the line and they knew now who he was, they would say, could I just have a prayer first? So he would leave the line and take them over to the corner just so they could have time for prayer. And so I've started joking with him because I've said that with so many people coming to him, he looked like he was starting his own little tiny congregation right downtown with these people. So I ask now if the House would please give a warm welcome to my pastor, the Reverend Dr. Jerome Barber.
The delegate from Carolina, Delegate O'Rourke.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, members of the House, on behalf of Delegate Scott and myself, I would like to call attention and welcome three individuals in the gallery. If they would stand at this time, it's the Williams family, Robert, Leanne, and Ethan. If Robert and Leanne look familiar to those of you who've been here more than twenty-five years, back in the day, in various terms, they were my legislative assistants. Fortunately, their son Ethan has embarked on a career of education in political science so they and myself might be educated on all the errors we've committed through all that tenure that I've been here. If you would join me now in welcoming them to the body.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a motion.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I would move that we strike HJ five twenty-six in speaking to that motion.
Five, five twenty-six?
Yes, HJ five twenty-six.
The delegate has the floor.
This study sought to require a study of the Department of Social Services. However, after conversations with the agency, we've determined that, one, the study would be costly, and, two, that DSS is probably not the best agency to conduct the research. So therefore, I would move that we strike HJ five twenty-six.
Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Will the gentleman yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I'd be happy to yield, Mr. Speaker.
I think it's assumed, but this is your resolution.
It is my resolution, yes, sir, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate Born moves to strike HJ five twenty-six. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the House. We are joined in the gallery by a number of people wearing red just above me from the Virginia Education Association and a large contingent from my education association, the Fairfax Association. If you guys would please rise. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, we have got these folks around and many of them have visited your offices and probably dropped off some of their lobbying talking points. From the VEA's website, the V says that they're here on Martin Luther King's birthday in particular because Dr. King believed that a great education lays the foundation for a strong community, and they honor his memory by coming together on MLK Day to celebrate everything that is great in Virginia's public schools. And also, just as importantly, to push for the changes they think they need, the changes we need to make to make those things even better. They've been lobbying you all to restore education funding to the budget, to make sure Virginia is competitor, competitive, an educator, and professional support pay, and to protect all public school funding. And so I hope that it'll be the pleasure. I know we all value the contributions of teachers and members of our Fairfax and Virginia Education Association. We know you all are doing very hard work under really difficult circumstances lately. And so I hope that we can demonstrate our appreciation for these great educators by giving them a warm House welcome.
The delegate from Dinwiddie, Delegate Taylor.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
I would like to introduce the Petersburg Kappa League and recognize the Eastern Province Guide Right Chairman Scott Johnson, his extraordinary leadership in mentoring, education, and teaching our future leaders in the meaning behind giving back to our community. By providing the positive learning experiences and teaching the importance of community engagement, the Petersburg Kappa League provides our children with many opportunities and helps them develop professional skills. They are a blessing to our community, and I'm honored to be able to recognize them today. Please join me in welcoming the Petersburg Kappa League.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, equality Virginians, LGBTQ plus Virginians and their allies from across the Commonwealth are here in support of our transgender and non-binary youth. So here in the gallery today are advocates, community members, school counselors, healthcare professionals, educators, and parents who believe that trans and non-binary youth deserve the dignity and safety to thrive no matter where they call home in Virginia. Today, these individuals spent time urging us, their lawmakers, to support LGBTQ youth. And likewise, I ask our members to please give them a warm House welcome.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Williams Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for two introductions.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, Stop the Violence seven five seven is in the gallery visiting with us today, and I would like to ask them to stand. Stop the Violence seven five seven is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to spread awareness and educate the community about senseless acts of gun violence. educate the community about senseless acts of gun violence. Stop the Violence 757 was founded by Monica Atkins, and she is the organizer's executive director. Stop the Violence started initially as a call to action in 2013 with a community rally after a spike in gun violence in Portsmouth, in which one of the homicides that year was a cousin of Monica Atkins. His name was Aaron Turner. That following year, in December 2014, gun violence again struck Ms. Atkins' family, and Monica's youngest son, Antonio Atkins, was murdered tragically. After the loss of her son, Monica decided to turn her pain into purpose and officially forming the organization and being a voice and an advocate for mothers who have lost their children to gun violence. Stop the Violence 757 has remained visible in the community with annual events, including their annual Go Orange Weekend, in which they stand in solidarity globally for Gun Violence Awareness Week, which was started after a 15-year-old Chicago teen, whose name was Hadiah Pendleton, was killed one week after marching in President Barack Obama's second inaugural parade. Most recently, they have partnered with Portsmouth Public Schools, Portsmouth Parks and Recreation, and received funding from the city of Norfolk for their grant, for their program, Each One Teach One, which facilitates job etiquette and training early on. Through this program, they are able to assist youth with computer skills, including typing and Microsoft Office training, how to complete a job application, resume writing, and role-playing. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, please join me in giving a warm House welcome to the representatives of Stop the Violence 757 organization.
The delegate from Goochlin, Delegate McGuire.
Mr. Speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a second introduction.
Hold on. The delegate still has the floor. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members of the House, I would like to ask the men of Kappa Alpha Psi to stand with their mentees. Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated is a historically African-American fraternity founded January 5, 1911, on the campus of Indiana University in Bloomington, Illinois. The fraternity has over 160,000 members with over 700 collegiate and alumni chapters located in the United States and abroad. Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity sponsors programs, providing community service, social welfare, academic scholarship, civil rights, education, and mentorship here in the Commonwealth of Virginia and throughout the world. Today, they are having their 15th Annual John T. Lanier Senior Kappa Alpha Psi Virginia Legislative Day. Leader Scott and I had the pleasure of serving on a roundtable discussion this morning, and the event ended with a proclamation to the Honorable Collette McKeachin in honor of her late husband, Congressman Donald McKeachin, who was a Kappa man. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, please join me in giving a warm House welcome to the men of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated and their Kappa Leaguers, who they mentor to the Virginia House of Delegates. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The delegate from Goochlin, Delegate McGuire.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Today, in the bell tower and in the balcony, we have members of the Virginia Citizen Defense League. The Virginia, the VCDL is a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots organization dedicated to advancing the fundamental human right to all Virginians to keep and bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment in the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 13 of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's today's Martin Luther King's birthday, and he believed in protecting our God-given rights, so I think it's fitting that today is the lobby day. So I would ask the members of the body to give them a warm House welcome.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, today we have visiting with us virtually and some in person, members of the greatest fraternity in the world.
This is the divisive stuff that we need to stop doing around here, right?
If you don't, if you don't believe me, Mr. Speaker, ask Delegate Torian. So...
Go ahead.
But today, virtually and across the Capitol, we have members of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated joining us here at the Capitol for legislative day, talking about the issues and pushing for the issues in our community that are near and dear to us and to our fraternity. The Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated was founded in 1911 on the campus of Howard University and has some 250,000 members around the world, and certainly here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, there are some 43 chapters. And as we exit from this session, you will find those members knocking on your doors, calling your offices, sending emails in regards to support for access to quality, affordable health care, making sure that kids in K through 12 have access to a quality education wherever they are, no matter what their ZIP code, as well as access to quality and affordable health care. Mr. Speaker, as members of the House, I hope it's the pleasure of yours, as it is mine, to extend a warm welcome to the members of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Third District Chapter.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
And, Mr. Speaker, I won't comment on what Delegate Hayes said.
That's what I'm talking about.
I just won't. But it is in dispute, Delegate Scott. Today, in the gallery, ladies and gentlemen, we're joined by the parents and students of Cultural Roots Homeschool Cooperative, and if they are in the gallery, I'd ask that they stand. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, this is a homeschool cooperative based right here in Richmond, just a few blocks from my house. And the interesting thing about this homeschool cooperative is they focus and emphasize on African-American identity and culture as part of a wider curriculum. And today, their middle school civics class, our students, came to visit, and I will tell you that I'd much rather stand up here and answer questions from any one of you than answer questions from them because they were pretty tough. So I would just hope it'd be your pleasure, as it is mine, to give them a warm House welcome.
Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegates Jenkins and Wampler. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Mr. Speaker, the second portion of the morning hour, member requests to move legislation from uncondested to the regular. I'm not aware of any such requests given today's calendar.
And the clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third portion of the morning hour is reserved for member requests for legislation to go by for the day, if any. The subsequent motion by the majority leader, Mr. Speaker, there are three. In the first category, the memorial resolutions, on page two of the printed calendar, Delegate Adams, HJ 491 is requested to go out of the block and by for the day. And then in the next category, in the commending resolutions, there are two there, on page five of the printed calendar, Delegate Wright's, HJ 477, by for the day, as well as Speaker Gilbert's House Joint Resolution 546 on page six. Those three bills requested to go by for the day.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the legislation as announced by the clerk go by for the day.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore, moves that the legislation as announced by the clerk go by for the day. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Mr. Speaker, the fourth and final portion of the morning hours is reserved for member requests for points of personal privilege.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for the point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, today on this King's holiday, we honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This past Sunday, January the 15th, Dr. King would have turned 94 years old had his life not ended abruptly 55 years ago at the age of 39. When I think of Dr. King and the impact of his legacy on the world, several words come to mind: sacrifice, justice, equality, nonviolence, and service, most importantly, service. Dr. King was an equal opportunity man, and believed that all men and women should be created equal, no matter the race, gender, or socioeconomic status, or who they loved. He wrote that every step toward the goal of justice requires sacrifice, suffering, and struggle, the tireless exertion and passionate concerns of dedicated individuals. Many individuals who get us to this point in America have sacrificed, suffered, and struggled. And because of it, we find ourselves now closer to justice, more closer to justice than ever. And in that movement toward justice, we can find hope and the courage to continue to sacrifice and continue to suffer and struggle for a better world and a beloved community, as Dr. King did. I reminded too of another King's message. He said, "Everyone has the power for greatness, not for fame, but for greatness, because greatness is determined by our service." My dear colleagues, I don't know about you, but I hope you feel the same way I do, as I have an opportunity to serve our fellow Virginians. We are elected to serve, and it is an honor and a privilege that we are entrusted with the care, well-being, and the safety of citizens in this great Commonwealth. It's important that we remember that our mission is to serve our constituents and not ourselves, to be unselfish in our deliberation. We must work to fulfill Dr. King's dream in the Commonwealth of Virginia and America. And there is still so much work to do, whether it is fighting, voter suppression, health care disparities, senseless gun violence, student loan debt, food deserts, or affordable housing, and a host of other issues that we still are fighting. We have work to do. And sometimes I wonder, and I'm sure Dr. King at that time, at his time and living, what are we waiting for? We cannot depend on the next generation to fix society's ills. We must act now. There is an urgency of now, and we must do more than recite the dream on MLK Day. We must live, breathe, talk, and walk the dream as Dr. Martin Luther King did. The power of his words and the acts of nonviolent resistance are as needed and impactful today as they were during the civil rights movement. Through peaceful protest and grassroots organizing and civil disobedience, Dr. King had a profound impact on our society and accomplished what many viewed as the impossible at that time. But when I think about what he did and think about these turbulent times that we live in, his legacy serves to remind us that moral progress is only possible through the continual act of civic engagement, advocacy, and action. The current social climate requires that we stay committed to his mission. Dr. King's life and legacy left a blueprint of progression that ignites the work that we do even today. And so I ask that you would honor him by continuing to uphold the torch of his legacy. My fellow colleagues, I'm asking that you will walk, that we would walk together and honor the legacy and to follow the blueprint that Dr. King left for all of us, and to level the playing field for all Virginians. Through the spirit of Dr. King's vision, we must work together and even in a bipartisan matter, as we work to build the beloved community that Dr. King visualized. Mr. Speaker, I move that today, when the House adjourns, that we do it in the memory and honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate McQuinn moves that when the House adjourns today, it adjourn in the honor and memory of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. As many favor that motion will, please rise. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As is noted, it's Martin Luther King's day that we honor and his life and legacy, and it's also colloquially known as Lobby Day, as evidenced by all the introductions that we've had so far during Morning Hour. And we have proponents and opponents of advocating for gun violence prevention on Capitol Square today. And unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, there are very few issues that are so divisive as this one, where there just seems to be such little common ground. Oh, sure, there's bipartisanship when a tragedy occurs. We're good at condolences. We're good at thoughts and prayers. We're good at having moments of silence. But that seems to be where the bipartisan ends. For some of us, it's always too soon to talk about solutions. Mr. Speaker, for so many Virginians, we're too late. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, in 2020, there were 1,174 firearm-related deaths in Virginia. Think about that. That's more than three people dying each and every day from a firearm-related injury just here in our Commonwealth. About 65% of those firearm-related deaths were to suicide, and nearly four out of 10 were to firearm homicides. Most of these deaths, we don't really hear about. We only hear about the mass shootings, but they're happening every single day, and they're impacting our families and our communities. The firearm injuries are happening all over the Commonwealth. It's not just in urban and rural areas. In 2019, Petersburg City had the highest gun rate death, followed by Dickinson County and the city of Danville. And firearm injuries affect people in all stages of life. In 2019, there were 661 firearm suicides, including 34 children and teens. Mr. Speaker, we're killing our children, our neighbors, our community members. They're dying on our streets and in our homes. Mr. Speaker, I don't have to tell you, this is an election year. All 100 of us are up for reelection. Voters are going to ask us, "What did you do to reduce the rate of gun violence in our communities, to stop the increase in rate in homicides and to stop the rate increase in suicides?" The Democrats offer getting guns off the streets by prohibiting the sale of dangerous assault weapons and large-capacity magazines, ensuring that you properly store away your firearms to keep them away from children or anyone in your home who might be vulnerable or suffering from a mental health crisis, ensuring that people convicted of serious crimes do not have access to a firearm, and maybe allowing a little extra time to conduct a comprehensive background check, or perhaps, heaven forbid, waiting till you're 21 before you can purchase an assault weapon. What the Republicans offer, Mr. Speaker, is making firearms more accessible, more available, anywhere, any place, anytime. Mr. Speaker, I know what you're thinking. I know exactly what you're thinking. What the Democrats are offering, it's just way too inconvenient to not be able to own an assault weapon. It's too inconvenient to have to lock up your guns in your own home. It's too inconvenient to have to wait for a background check to clear before buying a gun. But, Mr. Speaker, we can find bipartisanship in this area. We can break the mold. We can do something this session. We can put the safety of our Commonwealth, its citizens, our neighbors, our friends first, ahead of the inconvenience of just a few. When we go home to campaign, Mr. Speaker, let's not tell our voters that we blocked efforts to reduce the rate of suicides and homicides. Let's tell them that we passed legislation to address those issues, and let's do it. Let's do it together, and let's work together. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Freitas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Well, Mr. Speaker, I want to congratulate everyone. We actually made it to Monday, day four, before we heard our first floor speech, where we were essentially saying that if you don't agree with me, then it's because you don't want to do anything or because you don't have any solutions. And I guess it's not surprising that it was on issues with respect to the Second Amendment. I don't think there's anybody in this chamber. I would hope... I don't think there's anybody in this chamber, I would hope there's nobody across the Commonwealth, that isn't repulsed by the fact that when a firearm or any sort of implement is used in order to take an innocent human life. But the idea that the only solution that we can possibly offer for that is to infringe on essential civil liberties is, I think, absurd and demonstrably absurd. The real question here is, why is the solution from the other side of the aisle always seem to be, not in every case, but in most cases, it seems to be we're going to restrict the rights of people that did nothing wrong in the hopes that'll adversely affect the people that are doing something wrong or do intend to do something wrong? And the bottom line, Mr. Speaker, for many of us, we look at it where it's like, okay, if my civil liberties are completely dependent upon how somebody else misuses their civil liberties, well, then are they really liberties anymore? Are they really rights anymore? Or are they simply privileges granted to me by government, which can be just as easily taken away by politicians if they so feel? So if we do want to have any sort of bipartisan discussion with respect not just to the Second Amendment or firearms, but if we really want to talk about violence, I think that's something that we can have a discussion about. But it's going to have to start without mischaracterizing where people on this side of the aisle actually stand when it comes to gun rights. Because as I've said before, this isn't about the gun as much as it is about the individual's ability to be able to defend themselves. Because the CDC number that doesn't seem to want to get mentioned by many of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle is the other CDC number, which clarifies that there are tens of thousands, sometimes hundreds of thousands of use cases every year, where a law-abiding citizen uses a firearm to prevent themselves from becoming a victim in the first place. But if our solution or approach is going to be, we want to make it harder for those people to be able to get a firearm, the people that are defending themselves, well, then we get to ask the question, what happens when now they become a victim where previously they would not have been one? We can't just look at what you hope will happen by restricting civil liberties. We have to look at potential unintended consequences, second- and third-order effects. And again, the CDC numbers suggest to me that if we're going to make it harder for the person that is doing nothing wrong, that simply wants to be able to defend themselves, we're going to make it harder for them to be able to do so, then theoretically, we are making it more probable that they will become a victim. Now, when it comes to issues, as far as ensuring that violent offenders don't get a hold of firearms, or even better yet, once they're convicted, don't get out of jail early, because we've given them more credits than I know what to escape the actual sentence that a jury handed down, that's a conversation I think we can agree on. That's a conversation that we can have that I think would be very useful and productive, especially when it comes to actually addressing violence. So, Mr. Speaker, again, if we're going to have a discussion, let's have an honest one. Let's not mischaracterize the position that we're in. Let's not mischaracterize the position that we actually take with respect to not only preventing violence, but also preserving essential civil liberties. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullen.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, a child should never have to wonder where their next meal is coming from. We know that for many kids, the school cafeteria is their only opportunity for a hot meal. Right now, families across our Commonwealth are struggling to make ends meet. Inflation means costs are up, expenses are up. A family with two kids will spend over $1,000 every year on school lunches. Making breakfast and lunch available to all students is an important step in making Virginia more affordable for all. Mr. Speaker, I'm going to be using a term that's important that we all become aware of. That's CEP, or Community Eligibility Provision. That's the federal program that allows school divisions to offer breakfast and lunch to all children at no charge and without processing school meal applications. Mr. Speaker, for me, my bill, House Bill 1967, was inspired by when Newport News Public Schools went 100% universal breakfast and lunch. My three boys were all elementary school students at the time, and I saw that they and their peers were better prepared and their work improved when they weren't hungry. Last year, out of Virginia's 145 school divisions, 97 were eligible for CEP and 81 participated. That means that 67% of Virginia's school districts participated in CEP, and about 50 school divisions had no or limited CEP opportunities. Every child deserves a world-class education, and it's hard to learn if you don't know where your next meal is coming from. This legislation and budget amendment from Delegate Rome will reduce food insecurity, improve academic achievement, and student health. Mr. Speaker, this legislation makes sure that all school districts provide breakfast and lunch to all students, pays for it in full, and makes school lunch debt obsolete. It removes administrative burdens for determining eligibility and reduces the stigma for students who can't afford their meals. Children going into debt for school lunch is an insult to our basic values. A starving kid is not set up for success. It's time for Virginia to join the many other states like Massachusetts, Vermont, and Nevada and ensure that all children have access to a hot meal every day. We need to pass House Bill 1967 and Delegate Rome's budget amendment so that families and students no longer worry about the cost of school meal lunch, school meals, ever again. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Anderson.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
So, I don't know about you, Mr. Speaker, but I am sick and tired of school shootings, outraged by them. When I put my kids in the school bus to public schools every morning, I think about the very question of whether they're going to come home, and I think about the solutions to the problem. Newport News, six-year-old brought a gun to a school, shot his teacher. What gun law could have prevented that? We could have a law that says the gun owner should secure their weapon and the child shouldn't have access to it, but what gun law would have prevented that? And that's the problem with gun laws, is that they require compliance by the individual that chooses whether or not to obey the law. Last year, I had a bill that said we should have metal detectors in schools. Nobody had an appetite for that. Metal detectors in schools would have stopped that shooting that happened in Newport News. Not a gun law, a reasonable method to protect children in schools. Are we going to have a real, honest conversation that one out of every seven kids is on some type of an SSRI antidepressant, and that the FDA says that if a juvenile takes an antidepressant, it actually increases their suicidal and depressant nature? We're going to have that conversation when we're talking about how to stop school shootings, how to stop workplace violence, how to stop these things? I don't think you can fix what's happening with a gun law. What is an assault rifle? What is an assault weapon? Ask yourself this question: What is that? Assault is a verb. If you're being shot at by a gun, that's an assault. So, in UVA, the shooter has a pistol in a gun-free zone and murders his classmates. And as soon as that happens, the president comes out and says, "This is why we need an assault weapons ban." And then in Chesapeake, when the shooter shoots up his workplace in the break room, we hear people on the other side of the aisle calling again for the ban of assault rifles, semi-automatic rifles. He used a pistol that he bought that day. And so I just have to keep asking, where is the logic in saying, if we only made this gun illegal, this action wouldn't have happened? If we only do this, this action wouldn't happen? I think that we should have a more comprehensive conversation about why are these things happening, not necessarily the instrument that these things are happening under, and the actual correlation exists between taking antidepressants and people that are committing these types of acts of violence. Let's have that real conversation if we really want to do something about lowering the incidences of workplace violence. And I'll leave you with this: eight. Eight is the number of homicides that occurred in 2020 by all rifles. Eight. So if we ban semi-automatic rifles and we have alien technology that can come zap out every gun out of the Commonwealth, we're going to solve eight. With 1,200 people dying every year from a bullet entering their body, I think we should be having a more comprehensive conversation of how to really address this issue and stop the politicizing of, if we only did this, this wouldn't happen. And I'll remember to remind my friends on the other side of the aisle that two years ago, you did everything that you wanted, and we still are where we are today because we're not addressing the why. We are addressing the how. Until we address the why, we're never going to find that solution, and I hope that there's some bipartisan cooperation on trying to find out the why. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Koiner.
Mr. Speaker, I request you to return to the first morning hour for the purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, if you were in the incoming delegate class of 2020, then I hope the following group holds a special place in your heart, as it does for me. The House Page Class of 2020 are in the House in the gallery with us today. I am very excited to say that one of the young people from my community is up there, Maren Lenz, along with some of her colleagues going through our House Page program. Love it when they come back and visit all of us, since I would ask Mr. Speaker for my House colleagues to join me in welcoming them back to the Capitol today.
At least you haven't been here long enough to see him married with kids, the ones that were here when you started, or grandkids, Bobby. The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, piggybacking on what Delegate, the Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullen was talking about with CEP, I want to talk about something that we've actually done really well here in the General Assembly over the last few years, and then take it to the next step, because we've actually been able to find a lot of bipartisan agreement on school meals. We've passed 10 of my bills to do this. We've passed bills from Delegate Helmer, from Delegate Hope, and from others for us to feed hungry kids in schools. And the first bit of data I want to give you is a success story. When we passed my bill, HB 5113, during the 2020 special session, that was during, in the first year of COVID, I want to tell you the number of what's happened since then. After we passed that bill to require every eligible school in Virginia to participate in CEP, our number of enrolled students has gone from 384,338 that school year to now 566,713 students. That's 182,395 students we have fed because we came together across the aisle and across both parts of the Capitol in order to get this done, and we got it done right. This year, what we have put forward after precedent established by the federal government for having universal free school meals in the 2020 to 2021 school year and the 2021 to 2022 school year is what can we do to continue that? Because that's over now at the national level, although we wish it wasn't. First thing that we can do is maximize enrollment in CEP among already eligible families. A lot of you probably are like me in that you have schools in your district that are right on the bubble for CEP eligibility. They're at 39-point-something percent, where the eligible level is 40% of students who are on free and reduced meals qualify the whole school for universal free school breakfast and free school lunch. We are this close, and we've got some legislation this year to help close that gap and to get a few more schools enrolled and possibly even a few more districts. But at the same time, I want us to remember that hunger is right in front of our eyes sometimes, and we might not even know it. I'll take you back to 2020 with a brief story. At the time, right after we got out of session here and everything shut down, the pandemic just, we know what happened with our schools and all. I read a story in the Washington Post by reporter Hannah Nattanson that highlighted some families in Western Prince William that were really struggling. One in Gainesville was a mom with two kids. Her seven-year-old cancer-surviving daughter, who's immunocompromised, cried to her mom, "Mom, I don't want to get coronavirus." But in order for her to pick up free meals to bring them home for her kid, at the time, the USDA was requiring parents to have to bring their children with them. And so we did something. I called our federal delegation, we worked together, and we got a national waiver to make sure that parents didn't have to bring their kids with them. That was a huge deal for that family. And meanwhile, over in Bristow, there was a family, they have eight kids, including two with severe disabilities, and they wanted to know, how are we going to get through? How are we going to pay our bills? One of the moms, the one in Gainesville, told me that she was paying her utilities bills before they were shut down, before my constituent Adele Saddle and I raised some money and we were able to give them some breathing room. The other mom told me that one of her sons, he runs out of his meds this week, and now we can pay for it. When we have universal free school meals, we are directly targeting the families who can really use a little extra breathing room right now to pay some bills in other places. We don't means test for school buses, we don't means test for using water, for using electricity, for anything else at a school. Let's invest in our kids by having Virginia lead where the feds no longer are in having universal free school breakfast and free school lunch for every child at every Virginia public school, and let's get it done this year. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Williams Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Are we first morning hour for a motion?
It can be.
We can be? Okay, thank you, sir. I rise for a motion.
The delegate will state it.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to strike, if I can find it on my phone here, House Bill 1611. It is my bill, and the requesting patrons can't quite get it together.
You want to tell us what it does?
It is a process for competitive negotiation and website notices for local government.
All right. HB 1611.
HB 1611.
Delegate Williams Graves moves to strike her bill, House Bill 1611. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is agreed to.
Thank you, sir.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Converse Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As a concealed carry gun owner, I would like to address the fact that, no. I would like to address, especially being a Chesapeake representative as well, the comments made about the Chesapeake mass shooting a few weeks ago. Not listening to a Virginia Beach delegate who owns a gun store, who could potentially have sold a gun to any of these victims or people that have committed these crimes. What law would change? What law would have changed the mass shooting that day? It would have changed because a waiting period could have been helpful, a waiting period to ensure that that person had a cool-off period, not to go into Walmart of the Chesapeake that I represent and shoot up the employees. We have been trying to address this for a long time. Workplace violence, we've been working on this, we've been trying to come up with the why, but what have you done? That's what I have to say to the other side. What have you done to make this any better? And so that's the one question that I have. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Cordoza.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, the Reverend Doctor Martin Luther King Jr., who led many of us through the darkness even after his death, is remembered today. We remember him not only for his words and his actions, but for the effects that he had on our individual worlds and our collective experiences. On this day, storefronts and offices across Virginia will close in honor of this great visionary of the 20th century. We treat today as a kind of Sabbath, so that we can take time out of our busy lives to remember, to think, and to hope. We remember the brothers and sisters who left the safety of their homes to stand for their communities. Their bravery was seen and felt in places as grand as the capitals in Washington and Richmond, and as seemingly small, but no less important, as the schools in Little Rock and Hampton. We think about the trials that our grandparents went through to be able to host a Sunday dinner where the ingredients were bought at stores patronized by all races. We think about the tears that well in their eyes as they watch a table filled with their children and grandchildren joke and argue, laugh and smile. We hope that we can keep the community strong for our own children. We hope that as we face the adversity of everyday life, we can, we keep our heads high and our hearts pure. We hope that we can touch our communities and therefore the world as Dr. We hope that we can touch our communities and therefore the world, as Dr. King did, even if it is in some small fleeting way. We hope that we become the force that bends the moral arc of the universe towards justice. But hope is not enough. Dr. King teaches us this. We must decide to act, especially now, as every, everyday citizens begin to lose hope in the institutions of society. But the only way to act effectively is through a united front. When Dr. King marched on Washington, he did so with his arms locked with people who, who were different from him. It is this unity that I wish to speak about today. Regardless of where we stand on a few issues we differ on, we are a people united in a vision of equality. We are not red or blue. We are not conservative or liberal. We are different shades of purple, but always eternally American. And what does it mean to be an American? As our society becomes more close-minded and cynical, everyday people begin to think that we're defined by our division. The most egregious moments are not only when we exclusively define ourselves by race, but consider fellow members of our race to be less than because of the political party that they are associated with. America is a country that is supposed to be purple. It's supposed to be made up of people who look different from one another and come from different cultures and backgrounds. This, these differences are what make us strong, but only when they are used to move forward towards a more perfect union, exemplified by equality under the law, respect, and a society that cares more about what the individual does and not who their parents were. We have made great strides during this, the short history of the United States and the longer history of Virginia. Now, because of the noble labors of our brothers and sisters, I am able to stand here as an elected member of the House of Delegates. But there is much work to do. I don't despair, though. I embrace it. All across the Commonwealth, there are people who are keeping Dr. King's dream alive. My hope is that I can help bring the people of the Commonwealth together so that fire keeps the dream alive and never goes out.
The clerk will call the calendar.
Mr. Speaker, calendar for today, Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 16, 2023. Two items of action before us. First category, memorial resolutions laid on the speaker's table. The memorial resolutions to be adopted in block are listed on pages one through three of the printed calendar, with the exception of House Joint Resolution 491, which has been removed from the block and bye for the day.
Does any member desire to move an additional resolution from the block? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting in block the memorial resolutions laid on the speaker's table as listed on pages one through three, with the exception of those noted by the clerk, will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Continuing with the calendar, the next category is commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table. The commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table will be taken up in block. They are spread across pages four through six of the printed calendar, with the exception of House Joint Resolution 477, House Joint Resolution 546. Those have been removed from the block and are bye for the day.
Does any member desire to remove an additional resolution from the block?
Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Fairfax.
Mr. Speaker, if we could remove HJR 493 from the block, and there'll be a motion afterwards to move that bye for the day.
State it one more time.
So, HJR 493 on page five, at the request of the patrons, will be removed from the block and later will be a motion.
HJR 493 removed from the block.
Mr. Speaker, there are three bills removed from the block, HJ 477, 493, and 546.
All those in favor of adopting the commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table on pages four through six of the calendar, with the exception of those noted by the clerk, will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolutions are agreed to.
Mr. Speaker, that completes today's calendar. Are you going to take?
Per House Rule 51, sorry. I think we need to act on that. Delegate Simon.
I rise for a motion.
That would be great, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I move that HJR 493 go bye for the day.
As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. Per House Rule 51, the House has returned to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communication?
I apologize for misunderstanding, Mr. Speaker. The only announcements I have are the meeting schedule for this afternoon. It is as follows, there's a couple changes and updates. As we prepare to adjourn, the Committee on Finance is going to meet 15 minutes upon adjournment in the House over on the ground floor of the House Committee Room. That's a change in time for this meeting only. House Finance, 15 minutes upon adjournment, and then once they are finished, the Finance Subcommittee Number Two will be meeting again in the House Committee Room. That's a change just for this meeting. Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Courts of Justice, they have canceled their time. However, in lieu of that time, the two subcommittees are going to be meeting. The Courts Subcommittee Number One will be meeting, both the subcommittees will be meeting 45 minutes now, 45 minutes upon adjournment in the House. The Subcommittee Number One, of course, we, in House Room Three in the extension, and Subcommittee One will be in, Subcommittee Two will be in House Room One downstairs. A half hour after adjournment, the Committee on Appropriations is going to be meeting in the Shared Committee Room on the ground floor, and then once they're finished, the full committee, the Higher Education Subcommittee of Appropriates, will be meeting again in the Shared Committee Room. Committee on Transportation's meeting this afternoon at 4:00. They will be in the Shared Committee Room. And then also at 4:00, last meeting I'm aware of for this afternoon, is Admiral Chesapeake Natural Resources. Chesapeake Subcommittee will be meeting at 4:00. They'll be in the House Committee Room Two here in the Capitol. Looking ahead to tomorrow, Tuesday, January 17, the Committee on Privileges and Elections Subcommittee Number One will be meeting bright and early at 7:00 a.m. in House Committee, House Room One here in the Capitol. PNE Sub One in House Room One at 7:00 tomorrow. The Education K-12 Subcommittee will be meeting at 7:30. They'll be in House Room Two. The Transportation Subcommittee Number One, dealing with DMV issues, they're meeting at 8:00 tomorrow morning in House Room Three down in the extension. Transportation Sub One, DMV in House Room Three. Then at 8:30, Committee on Health Welfare and Institutions will be meeting in the House Committee Room, ground floor of the extension, and once the full committee's finished, Subcommittee Number One will meet upon adjournment of the full committee. As I said before, the Transportation Sub's meeting at 8:00, and then at 9:00 tomorrow, the Full Committee on Transportation meets at 9:00 a.m. in House Room Three in the extension. And then, following all that committee action, the Democratic Caucus will meet at 11:00 a.m. in House Room Two, and the Republican Caucus will meet at 11:15 in House Room One. Mr. Speaker, that's all the announcements that I have at this time.
The delegate from Batata, Delegate Austin.
Mr. Speaker, that's Transportation Appropriations meeting this afternoon at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourn today, adjourn to reconvene tomorrow at 12:00 noon.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore moves that the House, when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvene tomorrow at 12:00 noon. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until tomorrow at 12:00 noon.